Good evening. Welcome to the September 1st, 2022 Smyrna Municipal Planning Commission Meeting. I'll call the meeting in order. And with that, Mike Allen will lead us in prayer and Mark Atkin will pledge.
Let us pray. Dear Father, we just thank you for this day you've given us. Father God, just thank you for the privilege of serving this town, this commission. Father God, just continue to watch over this commission, just lead, guide, and direct us in all our decisions, not with the betterment of the town. Father God, just continue to watch over us and keep us safe, keep all our first responders safe, Father. Father, we just love you and we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow upon us each day. It's in your son's precious name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Place the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Mike and Mark. Citizens' comments?
None at this time.
Okay. Our next agenda item is approval of the minutes of the August 4th, 2022 meeting. Counselor, are the meeting minutes in order?
They are in order to this as to form.
Okay. Commission, I know that you've had a chance to look this over. Does anybody have any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes? Any further discussion? All in favor of approving signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. We are now on to old business. Our first item is rezoning requests. Frank Malowski, President Place, Isabella Lane rezoning C2 to PCD.
Yeah, this is a request you all looked at quite a bit and talked about quite a bit last month, and this is a, was deferred for some additional discussion with staff and the applicant. This is a PCD request. It is at the corner of President Place, Isabella Lane. It's about seven tenths of an acre. And this request is basically for a PCD, for a quick service oil lube business. The building's about 2,984 square feet. Some of the things that we talked about last month were regarding, well, there were a few things. One was regarding some signage waiver or signage requests that they had. That has been withdrawn. That's no longer a part of this request. Their signage package does meet our requirements, our sign ordinance, so that's not an issue to be considered anymore as far as that. And the other discussion we had was really the traffic flow and the access points that they were showing. We had some concerns about because of the proximity to the intersection. And so what they have done is to kind of reconfigure the building on the side. It's actually shifted quite a bit closer to President Place from what you looked at last month. The parking, employee parking, et cetera, has been moved to the back of the building. What that has done, they still are requesting to be five feet off of the side property line, which would be the west side. That is consistent with what you saw last month. However, by shifting the building quite a bit north toward the front of the property, it's actually much less of a waiver from the Isabella Lane frontage than what they looked at before. It's about twenty, a little over 28 feet now from the property line. Where last month they were looking at about 10 feet. So it's significantly different there. Positive aspect of that as well as by shifting the building forward, it actually provides more room for stacking in the back as well, so for vehicles, as for customers waiting to be serviced and everything. So the access now off of Isabella is about 150 feet south of that intersection. So it's outside of where the turn lane is and everything like that. So staff is supportive of the project with the revisions that they have made.
Okay.
And they have representation here if you have any questions. And I think that's all that I've got.
All right. Let's start with, Andy, did you have something?
Oh, no. Thank you for all the hard work so far.
Okay. I thought, I'm sorry, I thought I heard you down there. Let's start this way. Any questions for Kevin? And I know that we've had some members that weren't here last time to see if we have any questions for staff, and then we'll go to you, sir.
Kevin, what is normal for parking setback in the front setback of 28 feet?
For a parking setback?
Yeah, well, it's on the side where it says five foot.
Yeah, that's normal.
Okay. And then the one out front for the 28, is it normally?
As far as, yeah, that drive aisle is about 10 feet off the property line, which is, it's further than that from the sidewalk and everything. But yeah, that's, they're fine. That's typical as far as setbacks, yeah, for parking purposes.
Anything else for staff?
So along those same lines that Mike was asking, so in the item number five, you know, they were asking for the 28.1 and a five foot as a part of this PCD. So what, what is different than of what is normal?
Yeah, normally, yeah, typical, as a C2 lot, you would have a 35 from Isabella versus the 28.1, and you would have 10, really, it's a 15-foot side setback on the side. So that's a 10-foot waiver, so to speak, there.
H wood.
And so, you know, we don't have any issues. The lot on that side, you know, it's a, you have some distance, and then there's a drive aisle. There's no buildings or anything over there, and it's an easement there that provides for that building as well as the shopping center behind it as an access through there. So it's really, it's not a place anybody can build anything or do anything beyond just having that driveway. So we didn't have any issue last month or this month with that request. It's an odd shaped lot, you know. If this rezoned C2 and the use was allowed in C2, you quite possibly could have a BZI request for a variance in a C2 for a building setback because of the odd shape to this lot. So we didn't have any issues with that.
Okay. Anything else for staff?
So Kevin, with the changes they've made that we suggested in the sign, downsizing of the sign, square footage, staff would recommend this as they see it now?
Yes.
Okay. Count, recognize you. You'll give us your name and address, please.
Yep. So my name is Tim Crutz at 3025 Highland Parkway, Suite 850 in Downers Grove, Illinois. I'm standing in for Frank Malowski, who's out on personal matters today.
Okay. If you, did you have some comments or anything that you wanted to state about your project?
Well, I'll just very briefly touch on the operation, just to, since it's the second time, it's been a little bit. Obviously, Mr. Rigsby did a very good job explaining the changes. We've spent some time working with staff here and had a couple back and forth iterations to make sure we're achieving all the things we're looking for. And for Jiffy Lube, this site with all its challenges, actually, it fits pretty well with their model because they are relatively low traffic generating use. And their parking requirements are very minimal because they don't allow overnight parking. All their services is quick service. It's not quick lube anymore. It's actually multi-service. They offer different forms of service between filters and oil changes, tire rotations, things like that, things in the 15 minutes to an hour range, potentially, you know, an occasional service that might be a little hour, but the best part for their use is that all the customers actually wait inside the lobby during their service. So as customers come in in the rear, in the stacking spaces that we are able to modify or able to expand by pushing the building forward, that's really where a majority of the customers are going to be. And because they're not going to get out of their car in typical circumstances until they get up to the bay, it actually provides a pretty safe function for the site because they can come in the rear and then when they pull out of the, out of the bay into the front, the Jiffy Lube employee will actually pull that car out of the bay, and then the customer will enter back into their car after they've had their transaction in the lobby. So that lobby is, has pedestrian access on either side, so they can come in it and out of it based on whether they're coming into service or out of service. And then the customer can leave through that dedicated drive aisle. That's a one-way, which allows them to make a safe passage onto Isabella Lane going in either direction. Yeah, and I think that's about it. And we, we've also worked and reduced our signs, as was mentioned, so that we can be fully compliant with what's required for this district. And I think it's been a good compromise because it's allowed Jiffy Lube, again, with this unique layout of the site, you kind of have traffic coming from all four sides for the most part. So it allows them to get some visibility to their building so that you don't kind of miss it along that turn, especially without the access off President Place. So I think from the corporate side, Jiffy Lube's very happy with where we've settled land with some of the modifications.
Any questions from the commission?
Tell me about the parts of stacking of the park. How many cars can you, can you stack there?
Yeah, so this building is designed, this is actually a corporate prototype, and I won't get too long-winded on this, but the building is designed, the four bay is actually designed to accommodate 12 cars at one time. So you could have four cars waiting to get into a bay, four cars inside the bay, and four on the outside of the bay on egress waiting for the customer transaction to occur. So the reason they go with this four bay layout is that their expected traffic during peak times is like 18 to 20 total trips. That's nine or 10 in, nine or 10 out. So they like this layout because they believe that just within the footprint of the building, they'll be able to handle their peak traffic without causing large stacks because they lose business if people see long stacks in front of those bays, and that's when people say, okay, I'm just going to drive by. So part of their, their service and their operation is to keep people moving through there and have the appearance that this is open and I'm going to be able to come in and get quick service. I mean, similar to like a drive-through stack at a McDonald's or something. If you see too many cars, there's a better chance you are just going to pass right by it. So you have 12 cars there, and then actually with this configuration of the building, we actually could stack four more cars behind that. So it would be four additional cars beyond what would be expected in a normal Jiffy Lube layout.
Okay. You said 18 to 20 cars at peak time? Tell me a little bit more. What is, your peak time is like known to, to, tell me?
Yeah, so generally, it's going to be a Saturday, usually mid-morning, but it actually varies widely depending on the area and what's around it. So with this having shopping and Home Depot, this probably is more likely to be a Saturday type location based on what's around it. But there are a lot of stores that also see their peak time come in like on a weekday night, you know, like the after-work crowd. So it does depend, but I think because it's such a small number, there's usually a lot of, there's usually not a lot of variance on, you know, when it hits. Again, like if I were just compared to like a restaurant, for example, there's not going to be as much, you're not going to notice as much between their peak and non-peak times.
So that's really the 18 to 20 peak time is the day, so not like within a certain number of hours?
Oh, I'm sorry. That would be like a peak hour, yeah, during the day. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Other questions?
How will you do signage at the one-way out?
You make sure nobody turns in there?
Yeah. So we'll have two, two one-way signs on the outside facing the road. Because that road is angled, we're going to kind of have them angled in to, you know, follow the traffic, stop bar, stop sign facing internal to the site. But we will, we will make it well-signed, well-signed.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You know, I made some general observations last time. Having driven by this lot, you know, you can see that it is very challenging and just from the President's Place, telephone pole, utility box, fire hydrant, not a real good chance for any type of ingress egress there. The side, I know that we had requested, and the developer has met our request as far as, you know, getting this away from the intersection so we don't have an impact that with that way. And Charles, you are satisfied? Okay. And then just, you know, maybe just from a council perspective, this has been a challenging lot. It's set there vacant for a long time. There's no activity, and actually, I see this as an improvement to the area. You're next to Home Depot, and I know that we looked at another business recently, and you probably can see from the map here, a lot of rental equipment and things that, you know, kind of dovetail into an automotive type surface, or service, rather. And if you go down President's Place a little bit further, you actually have two tire stores that perform a couple different things other than just a tire that they're facing Sam Ridley. We've looked at a couple other things, and you know, I think our, our goal was to make sure that, you know, as far as automotive, that we kept it to a minimum from visible sight distance from Sam Ridley, and certainly it meets that qualification as well. So from those perspectives and with the changes that have been made, I can just speak for myself and say that I'm supportive of this.
Well, Tim, you pointed out this lot is really, really a challenging piece, and when I think about that being C2 currently, I don't know what you could do C2 there and get parking correct and all that kind of stuff.
It would have to be, you probably couldn't get a restaurant of any size or anything like that.
Couldn't really do anything much with it. It's a challenging piece.
Right.
But I, you know, I, moving that building forward and increasing the stacking and moving that intersection or that entryway all the way down, for me, makes a huge difference. That was, that was some of the real concerns last month that some of you probably got to watch. And I think everything we've asked them to do, they've done, so.
Other questions or comments?
Kevin, the pieces there with the sidewalk coming out, I know it's kind of coming out zero out there. The lot past that towards Rock Springs, is it, it's being developed right now?
Yes.
Do they run right up to that?
Partial, they do.
Is that sidewalk going to take it all the way to Rock Springs and get it?
That's a good point.
And Champy's entrance is closer to the storage?
Champy's actually did not have a separate entrance into their lot. They're utilizing the existing entrance into the storage. That was a joint entrance for those two lots, and then they also have access or rights to use the entrance that goes into the Home Depot.
I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with staff comments.
Have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
One. This motion is approved. We are now on to new business, annexation zoning and plan of service requests. Jennifer Speck, 3545 and 3368 Ambleville Road, annexation and PUD zoning and PUD amendment.
Yeah, this is a request. It's a, it's one development, but it's a couple of different things because it's, you have a piece of property that is already, has been annexed approximately three years ago, where the winery is currently located, and then you have a separate tract of land that is not within the town limits currently, that has been requested for annexation as well, and to have the same zoning as one cohesive development. The two tracks together, about 53.8 acres. Surrounding zoning is RM in Rutherford County. Future land use plan would support medium density, single-family residential in this area. The major thoroughfare plan does show Ambleville Road, which is a state highway, as a minor As I say, there is an existing PUD. It was for the Avian Glen Winery. That's for the parcel on the map that's on the screen there. It's the parcel highlighted in red. And so that approved PUD allows for 66 townhomes for the minimum size of 1,800 square feet. In addition, that approval also includes about 20,000 square feet of commercial space and about five buildings, an event venue, some horse stables, and a wine-making facility. This request is to annex parcel 2.16, which is about 16 and a half acres or so of the To annex that, add it to the PUD and basically for the, amend the overall development to allow for 78 single-family lots with a minimum house size of 1,800 square feet, 84 townhomes with a minimum size of 1,414 lot line units. They're called, they call them villas on their plan, with a minimum size there of 1,600 square feet. And in addition to that, there would be about 2.1 acres of commercial property along Ambleville Road in the area where the existing building, the winery has there along Ambleville Road, in that area, about 19,000 square feet total there in that area of buildings. The uses as allowed in C4 would be the uses there. They have amended their requests based on some of our comments. They do want to include the, the winery does want to keep a presence in that area, at least for some time. And so they have requested that be, in addition to the C4 uses at the winery, be allowed to keep that retail presence there. We did have several comments. Several of those have been addressed. Some of those will need to remain. We did ask them to submit a traffic study. We did receive that study. The study does recommend improvements to Ambleville Road at the entrance, the main entrance into the development, which is across from an existing county street. It's called Beatty Court. The, basically, the traffic study does recommend a left-turn lane on the northbound side and a right-turn D cell lane coming south at that entrance, as well as that the road, the new road coming in would have to be basically two lanes coming out, a left and a right turn coming out there. Those were, they looked at other intersections and different things. That is the only recommended improvements that they recommended, so we would, and Charles has reviewed that and is, believes, agrees with their recommendations. And so if this development is approved, those improvements would have to be, would have to be made, as was our recommendation. This is a state highway, so obviously it's going to have to be a concurrence through TDOT as well with all of those improvements. There is no on-site sewer available. The nearest sewer is available is at the Amberton subdivision, which is on, there's an existing county development in between this area and Amberton. And so there would have to be a connection made between the two. And so, and there is, within your packet, there is kind of a potential routing for that to happen, but utilizing the existing county right-of-lays through there. Part of this property is within the floodplain. There is a creek that runs through, kind of along, a big portion of the border between the two tracks that are, have been requested. And so some of this area, most of the area that's in floodplain is basically being left alone or is amenity space. There is some of the homes that would be potentially within that flood hazard area, and so they would have to go through a study with FEMA to, in order to modify that at all, and build up the homes to at least three feet above the floodplain, the metal floor. We did have a comment, just to, this was, a TDAC or A-RAP permit may be required because they're proposing a pedestrian bridge across that creek to connect the two sides of the development together. And so anytime you get into that, you may have to look at the hydrology of the creek and those kind of things. And so that may have to happen. Number nine's been addressed regarding the sewer mains, and again, how that routing would connect to the Amberton lift station, so we can remove that comment. We, I think the fire department has some concerns with the auto turn. They did provide some details on the truck, but, so that, we still need to work through that with them with regards to the auto turn. And there may have to be some dead ends, some of the dead-end streets, it may have to have the turnarounds. It's a little, or at least one place we thought would have to have one. So we want to keep those. Number 12 comment, our, we had to ask the question about the winery, and so they did respond to that, and again, the winery does want to keep a presence on the property in that commercial area, existing commercial area that is proposed to continue there and be expanded. So the uses would be against C4 uses with the additional sale, ability for the winery or the, the sales of alcohol there in that area. We did ask them to be a little bit more specific with their phasing plan and development schedule. That's been done, so that's, is a part of the packet. Some of the corner lots, they do show that they have a 35-foot front setback. They are front-loaded garages, but that, the side setback on the other road frontage would have a 25, and we just asked them to show, and they have, put that as in the packet or in the book, that there would not be, there would not be any streets or garages or anything facing that 25-foot setback. We want to keep that 35 because of the, being able to stack the vehicles that need to stack for the people that live or visit in that house. One of the amenities they're showing is actually, we thought was an amenity, but it's actually not, I guess, technically, because it's going to be on the commercial piece. There are some pickleball courts shown in the commercial portion of the development, and those would not be a part of the HOA maintenance or anything like that. Those would actually be a part of the, whoever owns that commercial tract of land will be maintaining those courts. So that has all been clarified, and it is on, in the packet. One of their sheets previously had some parallel spaces on one of the roads, and that's, but none of the other sheets did. There are no proposed parallel parking spaces along those roadways, so that's been taken care of and removed. Everything is consistent now, so we can remove comment 16. Comment 17, we'd ask them to add some parking near some amenities, near Road D, which is on the, the parcel to be annexed, and as well on the end of Meadow Brook Lane. They have added those, that parking there, we're good there. We did ask them to look, maybe look at redistributing some of the parking within the townhome area. Some of the units have pretty, a good amount of guest parking nearby, and some don't. And so we asked them to come, maybe to look at that. I think we need to keep that piece of that, comment number 17. One of the, there is an 18-foot wide alleyway that's showing being connected directly to Ambleville Road in that one area, again, the northernmost part of the PUD. We had a little bit of concern about that, just that narrow of a street coming into the state highway. And so we did ask them if they have contacted TDOT. They have not at this point about that connection. So we did have a little concern about that. That's still, I guess we need to keep that comment because that issue hasn't really been completely worked through yet. CUD, don't know about the fire, don't have current fire flow to meet the commercial portion of this development. They've got 1,100 gallons per minute, so we're okay for the residential piece, but not the commercial. So they'll have to work through that with CUD. One comment that was not in the list that we had sent them, looking at it. One comment that was not in the list that we had sent them, looking at it again today, I would like to, to make a recommendation on, there's on the, again, that northernmost piece of the development in the area is highlighted in blue or outlined in blue. There's about four lots there that front directly onto Ammerville Road. I would recommend that those lots not accessed with driveways to Ammerville Road. I think that would, from a safety standpoint, I think it'd be better for them to access internally. So if they, they may need to reconfigure some house, house plans or something, because they did have front entry garages and things. So that may be the houses back up to the road or whatever. I don't know what their plan is there, but I would recommend that. And that's a different, that's not in your packet. They did ask us, we do have some updated pattern books, so. I'm going to hand those out to you. Again, there here, if you want to ask them any questions, I'd be happy to answer your questions as well.
I'm going to go out on a limb and make a presumption that you're here representing the development. And I'm sure that we've got some questions. So if you would like to give us your name and address and kind of talk us through what we're looking at here, I'd appreciate it.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Kevin Estes of Land Solutions Company, two-nine-two-five Berry Hill Drive, Nashville, Tennessee, three-seven-two-zero-four. Start the meeting off in traditional Go Vols since we're kicking the season off today. Yes, I'd like to brought the pattern book and just like to kind of walk you through it. And hopefully I can answer the questions that everyone has, and I'm definitely available to answer any questions that I do not answer through this presentation. We were approached about a year ago by the Avian Glen Winery people to see if we would be interested in purchasing their property. At the time, they were trying to find a way to keep the winery since then their vines died and it's, they were just struggling to make that vision come true. So we started looking at it and around the same time, we approached Mr. Wall, which is the sixteen-acre parcel to the north and thought, well, if we could put these together, it could be a pretty neat environment. We started our vision with a, trying to create a park-like, multi-generational development, which is something that we have, we have not completely done yet in Smyrna. Blakeney does have kind of traditional family houses and townhomes, whereas Dogwood Villas, as we call it now, or Stewart's Creek, as we brought it through to you, was completely a fifty-five and older development. This is a more of a multi-generational development. So we started with trying to respect the floodplain. There's very little floodplain manipulation here. And in the end, we will end up providing more volume in the floodplain than exists today. And so we started there and then we secondly came and tried to create a mix of housing. So that's kind of where we're going to start. I'm going to walk through the amenities first and the housing second. But the amenities before, we had an event center that was planned there, some horse Those were kind of the two large amenities. And then they had the metal building where they were making the wine and then a tasting room on the front of the street. So we started there and for the first thing, the land is very flat as it is in mini floodplain. So we decided to come and create a two to three acre plus slate with a geomembrane liner. That way we're not, you know, I'd love to say we have a ton of dirt and clay in Smyrna. We don't. So we're going to end up excavating quite a bit of rock. It won't be even and we're going to end up bringing quite a bit of sand and dirt. And I built this out of the Grove in southern Williamson County. The only way to kind of keep it, you know, eight to ten foot deep without having evaporation and without having stagnant water is to put a geomembrane in it. So this will be geomembrane lined. It's perfectly fine if we stock it with fish, the fish will live perfectly well. It's nothing environmentally dangerous about it. It just prevents the water from leaking. And we'll have some drainage under it to keep the liner from bubbling and doing things like that.
But fountains in there as well?
There'll be two fountains in there to keep the water moving. And like I said, we've built three or four of these over the years. Unfortunately, I'm getting old enough to say that nowadays. But it'd be, we're going to put a fishing pier in there. We have talked, everybody asks if we can fish it. I get it. If we do, it'll be a catch and release lake for the residents only. Around that lake, we're going to build about four thousand linear for the walking trail. And we will be putting a pedestrian bridge across the creek. It will be a span bridge. We will not be digging in the creek. We will not be pouring piers into the creek. It will span the banks. We still will get an A-Wrap because it will set, it will set probably in the floodplain a little bit, but we will do a no rise in a, in a flood studies to make sure that it's allowed and permitted by FEMA and everybody along that. We keep being asked on some of the communities we've done already, like Blakeney, we got that big field kind of on the other side of the pond. And like, hey, can you put some soccer goals there? You know, now that, we're very happy to say the splash pad is open and active there. Now soccer fields are kind of the next request. And so we're planning a field that has a large multi-use, one without markings, and then two soccer fields on the front of it. Youth soccer fields, obviously, and I just had knee replacement four weeks ago, so I'm not even thinking about kicking a ball at the moment, but youth soccer fields, not adult-sized soccer fields. On the lake, where you see the semicircle, will be a outdoor living area with a very large covered pavilion with a TV wall inside of it, a wet bar, a grilling station beside it, and some sitting area with a fire pit. The, just outside of that, where the parents can see, will be a playground. Obviously, all that will be fenced so that no one's running into the lake or, or doing anything like that. And then on the front, where you see kind of the two geometrical shapes, will be a dog park with a small dog and a large dog partition. It'll have a fountain in each one for running water for the dogs, not a fountain, but a spigot for running water for the dogs. Have some obstacles, whether, you know, the concrete pipe, mounds, things like that. And then on the northern side, we were planning, I'm planting about two to three acres of grasslands just to reestablish some environment. You know, I was running around town with Ronnie Tucker the other day. He's seventy-two and like a third-generation guy, and it's been hayfields forever and ever and ever over there. So it doesn't have a lot of natural vegetation that comes with the creek. It's kind of been planted for hay for many, many years over there. As I go through the housing types, it's easier if I kind of direct you in the book, if you do not mind, but we'll start on page eight of the book because we have several housing types here. And page eight, the lots that are highlighted on that page are designed for single fam, single-level houses geared with no steps. Obviously for, as I get older, that's a much more sensitive subject to me myself. So we think that is good for the fifty-five-plus crowd or just even people who just don't like steps. Those houses will be at least eighteen hundred square foot, all good materials, no vinyl, all masonry-type materials. Once again, they are setback far enough to have four cars in the driveway, and they all have two-car garages. On page nine and ten, you see what we built in Blakeney, which is a little bit more traditional two-story house for the family with kids. We put them over there where the playfields are. We thought that was the most appropriate area. The houses at front, Armville, will be rear-entry houses. There will be no garages off Armville, no additional accesses. And we do not know what T-DOT would say about the alley. So if they say no alley, well, there'll be a minimum leave with the fire department and after that, we'll lose lots. But, you know, that's kind of that. Then we get to, and once again, the next page shows those as a single-family loaded houses. So you can kind of see what they would look like front of Armville Road on page ten. Page eleven are the townhomes, and I want to speak a little bit in length about the townhomes, because none of these townhomes will have garages in front. These will be rear-loaded townhomes with a street in front of them with parallel parking and streetscape islands. They will look very similar to what you see in the pictures on page eleven, and there's a rendering later on to show you a little bit more. And behind the townhomes will be a pad wide enough for two side-by-side cars with two deep, so they can all have four spots per townhome. It required us to make the townhomes a little wider, but we was able to make them wide enough to allow that. So you have four cars behind each townhome unit as well as a parallel space in front. And then we have distributed some additional guest parking throughout, and we're always willing to work with staff if we need to redistribute it here and there. But the townhomes will be rear-loaded. They'll be two stories. They'll all be brick and hardy plank. They're all, so the nice part is you can drive in front of these townhomes and not see a garage. I don't like parking in front of townhomes personally. I think especially if you can put four of them, you're going to lose the effect of the townhome as it will look more like a parking lot. So for us, with this community, trying to make it a park-like community, very important for us to make that parallel parking with parking in the rear for all the townhomes. And then the villas, you know, when we started with Dogwood Villas and Vice Mayor Atkins said, I like it fifty-five, I agreed, had a little concern in my stomach. I'm not a real estate agent. I don't have that expertise, but I always worry that I'm going to be my buyer. Not a problem. They are flying off the shelf, four hundred and forty thousand plus dollars. They look fantastic. If you've been by them, I think they look fantastic. The amenities, pickleball courts are being painted as we speak. The fences are going up. It's looking good over there. So we wanted to bring in that buyer. Our hope is there'll be kids here, families with kids going to Stewart's Creek, and grandparents over there to watch them and young families that are, can't, working at, well, you've got lots of places people work here, but just can't afford a five, six-hundred thousand-dollar house. I know still that struggle for me, quite frankly, that can live in a, in a townhome. So that's our goal with a multi-generational community. Page thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen show just some streetscape artist renderings of what it looked like going in front of the single-family houses and what the streetscape will look like with the grass strip, the sidewalk, the front yard. And then on page fifteen shows the townhomes and what they would look like being in front of those guys with the streetscape, the parallel parking, the sidewalk, and the front yard. So just sometimes it's hard to picture, so we asked the NARS to do some rendering just to show everybody. I am going to talk just very briefly about the commercial. Part of this whole negotiation over a year with the Avian Glen guys are they want to keep the tasting room open for two or three years, do a phase-one commercial. What they wanted to do, what we liked about that, it took us a long time to get an agreement. We finally have hammered it down to where we said they have to be neighborhood-type services. You know, no, no, no gas stations, no weird wholesale stuff, just neighborhood-type services. One of their big interests is to have pickleball courts that can be a benefit, whether they put a, you know, a little eatery there or whatever. So, you know, we've always said we'd like to go in on the pickleball courts, but right now they want it as part of their commercial. That's was part of the negotiation. So we agreed to the pickleball courts being on the commercial. If something should happen and that doesn't happen with those guys in the next four or five years, we'd be more than happy to incorporate some of those. We're putting them in most of our developments nowadays. That sport is taking off. I haven't played it yet. I guess I need to. But I'm sure building a bunch of them, that's for sure. So all these uses will be C four with the, I don't believe the winery will last long. They don't believe so either. But over the next two, three years while they get tenants into the phase-one of the building, they do want to keep the winery operational. So we've asked that the winery can serve liquor as long as it exists, and when it goes away, that amendment goes away with it. There's just a couple examples of what we expect the commercial to look like. And then even though I've talked through all the amenities, those are the, they start on page twenty-one and we'll walk you way back. And then the last two things I want to talk about, Avian Glen was approved with the sewer going through the county. We have been in pretty thorough discussions with the city and county. And Kevin, please correct me if I misspeak, but I think those negotiations are being productive and we seem like that's going to work out. This is, you go to Amberton's pump station. We know there's plenty of capacity because we just finished the improvement of Stewart's Creek where we ran a brand-new forest rain and upgraded that pump station for the whole basin. And that, we did that all as Blakeney. So that was all, the city reimbursed us some sewer credits, but the great majority of that was done on Blakeney's dime. So that is fixed up for the area. So the sewer, we know is there. And then the floodplain, once again, forty, forty-five percent of this, forty-three to forty-five percent is going to remain an open space for the large part. We're not touching very much floodplain. It does kind of bend in and out in a couple of places, so we are smoothing that out. But once again, when we dig the pond, we'll be lowering that elevation. The water will be, water level will be below where the ground level is today. So we are confident, once again, having done this twenty-eight years again, I'm confident we will end up providing more floodplain storage when we are done than exists today. All that will have to be done with a no-rise model, FEMA, Clomar, and Lomar final. Everything will be, have to be documented as built and sent to FEMA. So, you know, there's a real good checks and balances on the floodplain. It won't, not just a, you don't have to take our word as developers, that there's a lot of studies that have to be done to make sure all that is adequate. I'm here to answer any questions if you have them. If not, thank you for your time, and we look forward to hopefully another successful project with you.
Questions for Mr. Estes, while we have him up here. Kevin, I heard you talking about the villas and that might love for fifty-five-plus.
They will be fifty-five-plus.
How are you addressing that? Is it restricted?
Yeah, they'll be fifty-five-plus.
The other thing I see in the amenity booklet here, by the way, really nice.
Thank you.
It's a good-looking project. The sidewalks I see around the pond and the lake, but I also see walking trails, are they surface the same or no?
Yes, they'll all be concrete walking trails, eight-foot wide at a minimum, some maybe twelve. And we are willing for those to be public as long as there's no issues with that. We have some trailhead parking for that. And once again, it's about a mile without a loop, just from one to the other. So if you walk it all and come back, it's about, not quite two miles, but about one point six miles.
And all HOA third-party cared for?
Yes, they'll be HOA-maintained. Everything in the townhome area and the villas will be HOA-maintained, like as the yards as well.
The commercial, you mentioned the commercial will take care of the pickleball. They're not part of the same restriction. But hypothetically, you said this, I just want to kind of ask it. For example, commercial may not be built there for some time. It may not have a call or, you know, there may not be a need for a commercial person to come in and build anything like this yet because of its location. So then can the pickleball be incorporated into the subdivision?
Absolutely. We, we're under discussions now with the pickleball, like, you know, hey, we get those two soccer fields in that field behind it. What if we turn those to pickleball courts?
You got a fifty-five-plus?
Right, right. It's not there's fifty-five-plus nowadays, Vice Mayor.
No, no, but part of this is restrictive for those people.
I saw a pickleball tournament on TV the other day. I was like, see, I have never played it. I don't really understand it, but it's becoming a very popular amenity and one that's asked for in more of our communities. So it's definitely something we'll consider. Once, once again, our, we have contracts and everything, but we don't exactly understand the timing of what our neighbors are going to do, just how that timing affects us. So we may very well be glad to go ahead and install those. Like I said, we're putting them in up at the front end of Dogwood Villas, and already you've got people who have moved in that are ready to go.
Yeah. And that's why I was asking the question. Personally, I prefer to see it moved out of commercial, put somewhere else. That's just me. You have more parking for commercial too.
I, you know, we believe over at Blakeney, where you've got so much residential being, and the parks and the schools, it's there. I am, it was approved on the previous PRD and I'm, well.
I understand.
You've, you've worked many real estate contracts. It's just a negotiation. That's where we landed with that. landed with that.
Other questions or comments?
One more comment. This was already previously approved for nothing but town homes. So to come in and request this change, it actually softens the density and offers amenity. So that's one thing I'm happy to see.
Aren't we over just about three units per acre, Kevin?
Yeah, it's about, I think it's about 3.4 or something like that with the hun, it's a hundred, I think it's 176 total amongst the three different, all the different housing types he talked about.
Yeah, I forget the page, it's on the very first pages, but the side area density is about 34 or 35.
It's about 34, I think.
And the rear entry alley loaded, back entry garages there. I was out in Franklin today for an appointment and drove through some of those areas that have this, and it's attractive, it really looks good. It feels like, you know, they're, it just feels like community. So kudos to you guys for, in my opinion, stepping up with a nice-looking plan. It also meets our 55-plus need, so.
Kevin, the alleyway that shown is shown as 18-foot, is that sufficient among the...
The alley on the north side is a public alley, so that's the public alley standard. Around the town homes, all 24-foot, because anywhere you have parking off of it, it's more perpendicular, you want 24-foot if you can park off of it. Is that...
Yeah, we typically, most public streets are 20, well, 50-foot right-of-way, 22 or minimum, or 24 wide as far as the travel lanes.
Oh, I'm sorry, wrong Kevin. I apologize.
That's okay, that's Kevin one, Kevin two. Go ahead.
I apologize.
So, I mean, that's typically what we would see on that. We have had some alleys built in town, various places, and some that have been approved that haven't been built yet, so, you know, I think, you know, he did address one of my concerns about the drives. There wouldn't be any drives, those would be alley-loaded lots, those four that do front Amble Road, so that, he addressed that issue, my concern there certainly. But typically, like I said, we would see on a public road, we have seen, we have, alleys we have seen at 20-foot right-of-ways, we have seen that, I mean, that's a pretty standard for an alleyway.
So I guess that's my question to you, what is staff's preference there?
We have the concern, and I know while the, the alleyway that is coming out onto Amble Road, that was our main concern.
Okay.
Just because it's not, it's not wide enough to be our typical street that you would see. It's there primarily as a, as, to provide a way, you've got to have a turnaround, it's over 150 feet, you've got to have a way for the fire truck to either get out or you've got a cul-de-sac or something there to have a turnaround there. And so that's, that's why it's there for. I don't know what TDOT, they may be, they may be okay with it, I have no idea what their, what their policy is going to be.
Well, I guess, you know, if it's going to be used more as a road and an entryway to Amble Road, my preference would be that it would meet our requirements there versus what we allow for an alley, so.
Yeah, that was our thoughts. You don't really need it for access purposes, other than as a fire, as a way for, as a fire turnaround or whatever, so.
It could be used solely as a fire turnaround then?
It'd be hard, you could sign it and do whatever on it, but it's going to be hard.
Maybe there could be an alternative to that, if that goes away?
I think, there certainly could be an alternative with a...
With the amount of land there?
Yeah, we've got enough land there to make some sort of a hammerhead turnaround or cul-de-sac or whatever ends up happening, that would allow for a truck, a fire truck to turn around if we needed to.
So would it be staff's preference to work with the developer here and work with chief?
Work through some other alternative.
Okay, and have this go away? Other questions or comments for either staff or Kevin?
Kevin, that was quite a long list of staff items. Could you just go through the ones that are still outstanding?
Sure. Again, just that last portion of comment five, just that the improvements are required to be completed, that have been recommended. You know, six, seven, eight, kind of informational comments. Number nine goes away. The first sentence of number 10 goes away, but we do still have some concern about the car truck as far as the, being able to get through, mainly in that commercial area, I think. So we'd need to keep number 10. 11's kind of informational. 12 through 16 can all be removed. And the first sentence of 17, but again, we would want to look at that last sentence regarding redistributing some of that parking within the town home area. I don't know if they need more, I think we just could move some around so that it's kind of spread out for everybody in there. And then number 18, like we just talked about. And then 19 through 22 are all, came from CUD, so we would keep those as well, so.
And on, on 18, would it, I mean, this is more of a question, have they contacted TDOT? Would the preference be that that be a road?
If we're going to do something, that would be...
I think staff would feel better if it was a full road, like a typical road, or let it go away and we come up with some other alternative to a fire truck turnaround. Either or.
Okay. Good, Tony. So are you here representing the developer or...
Actually, I got a letter today about the meeting, I just had...
Here's what I'm going to do, I'm going to suspend the rules, and I'm going to allow you to speak briefly and just, just, if you'll come and give us your name and address and just tell us why you're here.
So my name is John Ellers. I own property on the backside of the proposal, and I'm not against the development. My concern though is drainage.
Okay.
And flooding. It's not shown on there, but there's a pond, I'm sure you all seen it, there's a pond that sits behind three of my properties. And my, and I already have drainage problem, codes already came out, I got to put a drainage in. So my whole concern is drainage.
Okay.
Is there going to be an easement? When you fill that pond in, if it is spring-fed, where's that water going? Because I already have documentation from codes on one of my properties, that it's retaining so much water, and it's literally on the backyard to that.
Okay.
So it's not on there, but there is a pond, which I know you all know, on that property, right behind my house.
Okay.
And I own three of them. So that's my, my whole concern is drainage.
Let's, I appreciate your comments, and let's address those for you, okay?
Okay. Sorry, I've never been to one of these.
No, you're good, you're good.
I'm not against the...
No, 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 but believe me, I really appreciate your comments and the way in which you delivered them. Okay? And Kevin, Kevin number two, I'll let you follow Kevin one, okay?
Well, just as good neighbors, but also as requirements of the state, we'll be required to pick up Mr. Eller, the water coming off of Mr. Eller's pond, it'd be redirected into the lake. The pond is there, is not a very healthy pond, we've already talked to the state, so we're going to purchase a couple wetland credits for that pond, and then, once again, create the new lake. And as far as Mr. Ellers, if there's some blockage or something on that retainage, it's, it'd be very easy for us to remove that blockage and convey that spring, because there's a lot of springs, we run into them a lot here in Smyrna, and we can't stop them, we don't cover them, we don't block them. We'll open a channel, and that channel, quite frankly, we'll be happy to have it going into that lake, it'll help keep that lake wet. So we'll, we'll dress it up with some rock and make it look like a little dry creek, and hopefully it'll help Mr. Ellers and, but we can't, we can't force it on this property, we're not going to make it stay there, we'll convey it to ours.
Okay. If you wouldn't mind just having a conversation afterwards, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, like I said, just if there's an easement or some drainage requirement.
All right. Good. Kevin?
Yeah, I don't know if there's anything I can add, I mean, that's certainly something we'll, we would look at, certainly if this is approved and we get to plats and grading plans and all that, all that will have to be addressed, the existing pond going away, obviously we can't push water onto any surrounding neighbors or anything like that. With that, existing water that would be coming out of a spring or something, or, you know, obviously just the storm water that comes from rain hitting roofs and driveways that aren't there now. So all of that will have to be something that we would have to review and, and, through public works and their grading permits, so.
As far as just maybe some general observations and comments from me, I remember when we approved the first set of towns that the Vice Mayor pointed out, I think it was more of a finite-type project in that it was heavily driven by the winery. And I think it had that Tuscan look, and it was going to be kind of the winery, there was some outdoor event centers, and I know that at that time that there were concerns with traffic and, you know, maybe noise, or could be lighting. It seemed like it was going to be more of a, of a, yeah, more intrusive, more of a commercial operation, for lack of a better way to put it. And with this, I'm seeing something that, I heard the word multi-generational, I think that's entirely possible. What, what I'd like to see here, and what I'm liking to see, it matches a lot with a comprehensive plan we've put together as far as neighborhoods and build-outs and things along that line. Plus, you know, we always talk in Smyrna about live, work, and play. Well, I guess if you worked at home, you could, you know, or if you were in one of those commercial buildings up there and you had a job. But even more so just to live and, live and play in that I'm seeing real, real soccer fields, you know, real dog parks, just not, you know, patches of grass, a lake amenity. The pavilion that I could see, you know, for tons of birthdays and special events, plus all the walking.
Where you can go to watch the UT game.
There you go.
Absolutely.
I see some heads going this way, but...
But I'm seeing more so of that now, and I think it's opened this property up, and I actually think it's, it's better for the overall area out there now. Other questions or comments?
So the pond that's on it, proposed to be on it, is going to be for detention as And will it, I mean, I'm under the assumption it's been engineered to where it will hold whatever water's running off that property, just like a standard pond would without, because that is very low in there, and that also runs back to the park, the new park, that creek does. I'm concerned about it holding enough water, especially for all the rooftops that's going to be in there.
Well, it'll have to, either somewhere else on the property or something, they're required to...
There's not another place on the property to hold water, that's kind of what I'm...
Yeah, I mean, it'll have to be deep enough, you know, they'll have to design it to do that, I mean, that's, to meet our requirements.
Other questions or, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mike.
Of course, there's no, that's, we get county zoning all the way around that.
Correct.
On both sides of the road. The only city zoning is Amberton, part of it, and part of the old, the original subdivision of Meadow Ark is still county.
That's correct.
Yeah, to the park, yeah.
Other questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with all the staff comments, as well as making sure the developer and Mr. Ellers have an opportunity to meet together and resolve his concerns with any water flow.
Okay. I'd like to second that. Can I add to a second? Uh, no, I think we'd have to...
Have to get a motion to amend the motion.
We'd have to get a motion to amend.
Yeah, I'll just second that.
Okay. A motion, have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments, further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion is approved. Our next item under new businesses, Bob Hackel, north of Colonial Town Park, Coles, rezoning PUD to PUD with each two overlay.
Yeah, this is a request, this is a, you all looked at the site plan for this last month, it is for a hotel. Their request is to basically, which was, the site plan was approved with pending the, this request being considered and approved. This is on part of the Colonial Town Park, PUD, it is located near Coles, near behind that entire shopping area there. It's about 3.54 acres of property. It's surrounding zoning is a mix of R4, R6, and the PUD that's in town, and an I2 heavy industrial in Luverne. In addition, parcel 17.02, which is directly east of this, was approved for a height overlay back in January of '08. There was a hotel that was looking at that side, and that obviously never happened, but it was approved for a height overlay there as well. This is a part of the San Bradley corridor character area, so it certainly would fit within there as far as our land use plan. No streets are affected by this. This, again, is a height overlay, is all that's being asked for here, not a use issue or anything like that. They'll allow for a hotel with a height of basically 45 feet, two and a quarter inches, which is exactly what was shown on the site plan and the architectural elevations, which have a part of the site plan that was approved last month, so with that, staff would recommend approval.
I will entertain a motion. Have a motion to approve with staff comments, do I have a second? Have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments, any further discussion, or any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion's approved. We are now on to final plats, first one, Chicken Pike, owner, developer, Hollings Head Land LLC.
This is a final plat for three lots in the R1 zone on Chicken Pike. This, because it's just three lots and there's no new infrastructure or anything, it can come directly to you just as a final plat. Chicken Pike is a collector on our thoroughfare plan, and they are showing right-of-way to be dedicated with this plat for that. Just some standard comments regarding development agreements and signatures being added prior to recording. We did ask them to show existing and proposed water and sewer mains, and in reality, what they are looking at doing, this is, does lie within CUD's water service area. There is an existing house on, that is on the proposed lot two, there is an existing mobile home on the proposed lot three, that mobile home would be removed. What is proposed, there's an existing water service from the main that's along Old National Highway from, to those two existing residences. They would basically keep those in place for lots two and three, and then add a third, and CUD has approved that. So there would not be a water main, it is not proposed to be extending along Chicken Pike to serve these. So that is, and then sewer would be coming from the patent retrieved development, basically would be easements that have been created on those lots for, basically to provide sewer to those three lots through the existing patent retrieved development. So that, they have addressed that, not on the drawings, but just through, in talking with them. That is shown again on the drawings regards to sewer. Has been shown. We did ask them that those, the easements that have been amended and added, we did ask them for the documentation on that, we still need to get that documentation, they gave us a book and page, we didn't ask for the written documentation. Number six, we did, to ask them to show a fire hydrant within 500 feet of all the lots. That has not... That has not been shown. They would look at adding a hydrant on Old Nashville Highway, near Old Nashville Highway there, which would cover the house to be built on lot three, and in reality, lot two as well. It would not cover lot one. They, it's not anything on the drawing or anything in front of you, but they did verbally have asked, requested that lot one not be required to have a hydrant within 500 feet as an alternative to sprinkle the house and have a, add a hydrant at another location because basically there's no water line in front of these lots at all. And so there's no way to add a hydrant without adding a water line. So they have requested that. Staff and I talked with our fire department before the meeting, would not recommend that because of how it would affect our ISO ratings potentially. The fact that we have the 500 rule, require the hydrants within 500 feet actually helps us quite a bit in our ISO reviews. So we would not recommend that appearance, but they did request that. Again, it does lie within CUD's service area, and so they, we need to add that certification. That is not on the plat currently. Again, comments basically eight through 16 are all from CUD, so they would need to work through those with CUD. So again, we would basically, we could remove comments number four, but we would want to keep all the other comments that are shown there. And we would be happy to recommend approval with those comments.
Questions for Kevin?
Is 16 a CUD comment? Just to double check.
Yes.
Okay.
I believe so. That actually may be ours. Regarding a sign application, that actually may be ours. So, but yeah, we would want, basically the comment, the only one that would really be
Any other questions or comments from the commission?
Kevin, you said lot, is it lot one that has no access to water or fire hydrant? And there potentially.
Well, it has access to potable water.
But not pressure.
But not hydrant, right.
So you're saying keeping comment six, show a fire hydrant within 500 feet.
Yes.
Still includes lot one?
Yes.
Yeah, these are very nice as lots, and I think as long as we take care of fire protection and, you know, what we do is, and requires a town, it's nice to see some of the larger lots that, you know, they're asking for. Anything else from the commission? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Further discussion. All those in favor of approving signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is approved. We are now on to Oak Meadows, section one, Lee Road, owner developer, John Burns, JM Burns LLC.
This is the final plat for Oak Meadows, section one. We had several comments that were left. It's 28 lots in the Oak Meadows PRD, it's about 9.81 acres, it's on Lee Road. We did a few comments, several of them were just kind of standard or informational comments. One, major thoroughfare plan, just show Lee Road as a collector, and they are proposing the right-of-way dedication there with this plat. Two and three are just standard comments to remain. Number four, olive branch sewer is not operational at this time. It is getting closer, but it is not yet. The offsite sewer from this development has not been installed yet, so no building permits can be issued till all that's completed. So we want to keep that one. We did ask them to, there was a couple, some of the easements on lots two, nine, and 16 through 19 had some oddly safe drainage easements. We did ask them to add some more dimensions on that, just so they're more easily delineated and can be, as building permits come in and those kind of things, we can be sure we see those. We want to keep that. This is, it does lie within our service area, but there is an actual, an existing CUD water line along Lee Road, and they did ask for that to be shown with an easement and that sort of thing. So that would still need to be addressed as well. So essentially, all eight comments will need to remain, and with those eight comments,
Hearing none, do I have a motion?
Move to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is approved. Our next item under site plans is 501 Huntley Drive, Weekly Lane, Huntley Industrial Development. Owner developers, Jake Berry, TG Builders.
Site plan for a proposed office, warehouse, machine shop at the corner of Huntley Industrial and Weekly Lane. This is last commercial subdivision lot in this area to be developed out. The rest in this, back to a cul-de-sac, all been developed. So this is the last one that would be developed at this time. The, there would be two entrances that are proposed off the site, one off of Weekly and one off of Huntley Industrial. Square footage for vehicle use area at the site is changed a little bit from the previous times that this report was written. So we're looking at 11,663 square feet, which would require 933 square feet of landscaping. Applicant is proposing for 2,153 square feet, so exceeding our requirements. Total park required, the applicant has shown a required number of 16 on their plans. Staff, there's a little bit of confusion as far as what the actual building's gonna be used for. So based on our calculations, we're showing about 23 spaces. Floor plan has been submitted as part of the overall site plan's middle. It's showing about 20 office spaces and then also a open space for what's assumed to be some kind of a machine shop or warehouse area. So we're trying to figure out exactly what the usage is for this, and we got staff comment later in this report that'll kind of detail that as well. So with that, we would deem the required number of spaces to be 23, and they are showing for 21 spaces. So in that, if we do get the required of 23 spaces, they need to add an extra two spaces to accommodate for such. As part of that, there's one handicap space is required, and they are showing for one as well. Landscape plan shows trees and variety of shrubs planted along both road fringes, as well as the front of the property. Additional shrubberies proposed at the base of the building and in landscaped islands. The elevations that were submitted previously have been updated since the report went out, so we have updated elevations on this. The new elevations, sorry, the previous elevation showed primarily metal building, which would not meet designer review, so they provided it to include a mixture of brick and metal. The elevations to the south and the west, which are both visible from Huntley Industrial and Weekly, do primarily have majority of brick on those, and the remaining material is metal on it. The east elevation is entirely metal, which is fine, being it's not visible from Weekly Lane. The north elevation, they do show probably about 30% of that is to be brick, and the rest is metal. With staff's assumption that if you're driving down Weekly Lane, you look down, you would see the rear of the building, so we'd like that to also meet the 75% threshold requirement as required by designer review. So really close to meeting our requirements, that we would like the rear of the building, if you're looking at the front of the building being Huntley Industrial, so the north side of the building to meet the 75% threshold. Currently at 30%, like bring that up to 75% primary materials. Standard comments, one through five, all to remain. And staff comments, the majority of these have been addressed. Comment one regarding the line sizes have been addressed. Comment two is regarding the architectural elevations and then sizes as well, that has been addressed. Comment three regarding the square footage of the building, there was some discrepancy as far as the two levels, and it wasn't shown correctly on all the pages, so still a little bit of incorrect information on the final couple of pages, so that comment will remain. Comment four has been addressed. Comment five, it's a more so informational comment than anything else, the building will be required to be sprinkled. Comment six, building must meet designer review, and this goes back to that north elevation, just needs to be brought up to that 75% requirement. Comment seven, they had excessive amount of ornamental species of trees that has been addressed and can be removed. Comment eight regarding a sidewalk from the north entrance to the parking lot, that can be removed. Comment nine, the finished floor elevation was not shown on previous plans, that has now been shown, can be removed. Comment 10 regarding the rim elevations has now been shown, can be removed. Comments 11 regarding the fire line, reduced pressure backflow preventer has been addressed. Comment 12, once again, about a backflow preventer has been addressed. Comment 13 regarding a utility plan sheet has been addressed as well. And then we have one additional comment to be added regarding the parking space, which I touched on earlier. So we'd like to see how the breakdown of the parking spaces were calculated, so we can accurately determine what the actual required number of parking spaces is for the site. And based on whatever the findings is for that, we just recommend whatever is required is part of that breakdown percentage. So with that, comments one, two, four, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, all be removed. And we just added that extra comment regarding the parking spaces. With that, staff would recommend approval.
Let's see, and then Mitch, summarize again what we need as far as the elevations, what staff's asking for to meet designer review.
The, so the north side of the building is the only side that needs to be revised on it. Bring that up to the 75% primary materials, because we believe it will be visible from Weekly Lane if you're driving down it.
Okay. I recall we did the same thing across the corner, didn't we?
Yeah, both. Oh, yeah.
On this side, it's not.
Yeah. Very similar situation.
Mitchell, do they know what they're gonna use the building for? I know you made a comment and said they're not sure what they're gonna use it for.
Yeah, I've heard in the application, even there's something about the machine shop potentially on the inside, on that open space. Spoken with the applicant on this a little bit, they do several roll-up doors, mentioned that was being used for ventilation, so what have you, that lead too. So this is, once again, is in line with what we need to get some more clarification on as far as those parking calculations as well.
Zoned appropriately though, correct?
What was that?
Zoned appropriately.
Oh, yes, correct.
I guess the other question I have, if they're gonna put a sprinkler in it, and it is a machine shop with oil, does that require a specific sprinkler system, or can you put water and oil together to fight a fire?
Yes, it is. It's on the type of oil.
That's, that would need.
No, you're good.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. I just want to make sure the comments heard.
What would trigger that, knowing what was going in it?
Yes, sir. It'd depend on the type of oil, the type of products we produce. If it ended up with a company, for us to kind of drive.
Sir, you have a surname and address, please.
Jeff Turner. My office is at 700 Swan Drive, Turner Machine Company.
Okay.
Been on Swan Drive for 25 years, two different locations.
Okay, were you here to address Mike's question?
Yes, I can address that.
Okay.
We don't actually use oil, and for the most part, it's a very small amount. We use a water-based cutting coolant.
Okay.
We're not a large manufacturer. It's a very small.
So it's not a traditional machine shop?
It's a job shop.
Not in the sense where they're gonna, where you're using oil?
It's less than a gallon a month.
Okay. All right. Other questions for Mr. Turner while we have him up here?
I've been to Mr. Turner's shop over there on Swan Drive. I think we were all invited to come and take a look at it, and they run a real clean, nice operation over there, so I know if you're the owner of this business at all, then you would probably operate in the very same manner.
Yes, sir. We sold the prop, we sold the building at 700, and we were 603 for 17 years. We've been at 700 for almost 12, does that add up? Maybe not. 10 years, 10 years at 700. So I've owned this property for about over 20 years on Huntley, and we've downsized a little bit, so we're gonna go back to the more traditional what we were doing.
Have some more parking area there too.
Sir.
You have better parking and stuff with the new location probably than you with the old one?
Do, I'm sorry.
You would have better parking in the new location than.
Yeah, this is sufficient for us. It's, we've squeezed all we can in there to develop it with the requirements, you know, the brick, the sprinkler, it's, it's a small lot, so we've squeezed as much in it as we can, so that it's a good financial investment.
Okay. Anything else, sir?
I'm here for you.
Yeah, I think we're good.
Okay, thank you.
Kevin, is Weekly one of our roads towards that state?
It's a city street.
Okay. Yeah. Any other questions for staff? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
Move to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion's approved. Our next agenda item is Ammable Retail Center, 1929 Ammable Road. Owner developer, Bick Hoppy J Patel.
This is a site plan for a three-unit retail complex. The proposed location has road fringe along Almaville Road with one access point. The proposed development is currently two parcels, will need to be combined prior to issuance of any kind of permits. As proposed, the site would have two restaurants on each of the end units, with a drive-through location on the north and south sides of the building. The site has adequate stasis for vehicles not to back on Almaville Road. At this time, the property is currently vacant, both those tracks. Square footage of vehicle use area for the site is 22,772 square feet, which does require 2,277 square feet of landscaping. Applicants proposing for 5,500 square feet. Total park required of 43 spaces, and they're showing for 46. Handicap parking requirements of two spaces, and they're showing for two as well. The landscape plan shows strawberry plant along Almaville Road. There are some overhead utility lines and easements, and underground utility lines as well running along Almaville Road, so in lieu of street trees, they're utilizing shrubbery. A variety of trees are shown along the northern and southern property lines. The rear property line is required to have a type C landscape buffer due to the residential homes behind this lot. And in order to create this effect, they're using a row of arborvitaries, and then there's a utility line as well that runs behind this lot, near the edge of it. So they're kind of having it separating over that utility line with arborvitaries on one side, and then having your offset shrubbery on the other side. So a little bit wider than a typical landscape buffer of this type is concerned, but still achieves the desired outcome for it. The architectural elevations submitted show the building could be built primarily using brick, stone, and glassing glazing. Ephesin fiber cement are shown as secondary materials on the front of the building. The sides and rear of the building are composed of at least 95% primary materials. The front elevation has been revised since the packets went out, so the revised elevations now show 75.52% primary material on the front of the building, which does now meet our designer review requirements. So all things considered, this building is meeting designer review as it stands today. Standard comments, one through five, will all remain for this. Comment one regarding the combination plat, being this is two parcels, we require a combination plat to be recorded prior to issuance of building permits. Comment two. Comment five, there is a possibility of future center turn lane off Ambleville Road may be removed. At that time, the access to the site would be coming right in, right out only. Six, adequate parking is shown to meet the zoning ordinance, the third space within this building cannot be used as a restaurant due to the requirement of retail versus restaurant spaces and parking ratios, so once again, just another informational comment for the owner, in that climate. Comment seven, there is a proposed retaining wall at the site, and we asked them to provide details on this, and they said these will be provided with future construction plans. Comment eight, the, regarding the front elevations, has been revised, so comment eight can be removed. Comment nine was, we asked them to show a fire hydrant on site connecting to a main that has been extended from the west side of Ambleville Road. The applicant is showing revised plans, there is a existing line, a twelve-inch main that CUD owns, north of this site, north of actually the northmost development on the opposite side of that, so they're showing the existing twelve-inch main to be extended with an eight-inch main being brought down to the site, and you have a hydrant right there to serve it, that's what the current plans show at this time. So we'll leave that to, it needs to go through also CUD, being this is a CUD water line such, so we'll have CUD and our utilities get on this and make sure that's meeting all our requirements. Comment ten is regarding the building square footage, there are discrepancies between what the architect was showing and what the site plan shows as far as actual square footage, so we just want those to be on the same page. Comment eleven, the, there was a tree shown within a parking space, has been addressed and can be removed. Comment twelve is regarding the sprinkler, or the building being required to be sprinkled. Thirteen, minimum fire flow is required to be fifteen hundred gallons per minute at twenty PSI. Fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen are all CUD comments, this is regarding the fire flow out there. From my understanding, with talking with the applicant on this, the applicant is working with CUD on this to try to figure out what the actual fire flow pressure is and how to accommodate it, so this is something that the applicant will work through with CUD to meet the requirements, and they're under the understanding that they will not be able to operate this without having adequate fire flow. But just note, at this time, the gist of all these comments, at this time, there is not adequate pressure, upgrades will need to be made to the site in order to obtain adequate fire flow. Comment eighteen is regarding the existing hydrant, that comment can be removed. Comment nineteen regarding the water sewer, water services existing along the long side of the proposed meter vault, utilities comment will be, will remain for this time. And comment twelve, twenty regarding the field locate all the existing water meters on site, these taps to be abandoned by CUD prior to construction commencing, it's not our CUD comment, and that will remain. So comments eight, eleven, and the eighteenth, no, we're moved, and then the rest are to remain. Most of these comments are informational comments for the applicant and owner, the remaining concerns are regarding the fire flow, and this is something that, from my understanding, they are working through with CUD on to obtain adequate pressures to achieve this. So with that, staff, recommend approval.
for any type of restaurant use?
So, currently it's adequate for two spaces, they're showing three units, we just want to be known that the middle unit and not, cannot be used as a restaurant space.
Okay.
They currently have it set up for two drive-throughs on the end units, which is okay based on the current parking that they are providing.
Okay. So adequate for two?
Correct.
Okay.
Not for three.
Do I have a motion?
Move to approve of staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this motion's approved. Our next item is Stonecrest Development, Stonecrest Parkway, Rock Springs Road, owner, developer, Robert Bubbs.
Three medical buildings are posed at the...
I won't be participating in the conversation.
This is, I believe, a site plan they all seen here in the past month or two, this is for three medical buildings and a hotel on the corner of Rock Springs Road and Stonecrest Parkway. Property is approximately five point five five acres in size, and the southern portion of the site is located within the five hundred year and one hundred year floodplains. Most of the development in the floodplain is reserved for drainage and detention, the site would have access points off of Stonecrest Parkway with the other access points from the adjoining gas station and a neighboring track over to the east. Vehicle use area for the site is, we've had an amendment on this, these numbers as well since the package went out as well, so we're now looking at two point two six acres of vehicle use area for the site, which would require nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four square feet of landscaping, they're showing for nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one square feet. Total park required of one hundred and thirteen spaces, and they're showing for one hundred and sixty-nine, and six handicap park spaces are required, and they're showing for eight. The landscape plan shows a variety of shrubs and trees planted throughout the site, the shrubbery and trees are shown lining the perimeter of the property and throughout landscape islands. Architectural elevations submitted show all four buildings to utilize primary materials of brick and glass glazing with accent material block around the base of the buildings, no more than ten percent of the entire building may be finished with accent material. Medical buildings one and two show fourteen point two percent block, which these, which does not meet designer review, so that would need to be revised in order to meet designer review at that ten percent maximum. Comments, standard comments, one through five, all to remain. Staff comment, a lot of these comments that remain are, a lot of these are utility and fire department comments, so comment one, utility, we're in the water and sewer construction plans being under review. Comment two is a informational comment that all three structures that are, all structures three or more stories in height will require building plan review and approval from the state fire marshal's office prior to issuance of building permits. Building will be required to be sprinkled as well. Comment three, the first sentence has actually been addressed on this, is regarding the exterior building material percentages, still goes back to the percentages not meeting designer review, so we'd like them to revise it to meet designer view. Comment four, all reduced pressure backflow preventers must be immediately downstream of each water meter. Five, to show how all water mains are connecting existing water mains. Comment six, to show all the existing water and sewer natural gas lines. Seven, provides more utilities, water and sewer details. Eight, to provide all fire lines serving each building. Nine, to show the FDCs immediately downstream of each back, each fire line backflow preventer. Comment twenty, to show twenty-foot public utility easements over all water and sewer mains, a plat will be required to be recorded showing these easements. So a lot of those are utilities comments. Comment eleven, regarding the eight-inch to a six-inch PVC has been addressed, that can be removed. Comment twelve is a fire department comment, the fire department is still not comfortable with the way the auto turn is shown and depicted in the site plans and has some serious concerns about navigating throughout the site with their fire truck, so that is what comment twelve is regarding. Comment thirteen, the road behind the hotel must be twenty-six foot wide, this was enough to navigate the fire truck behind, and they have done so, so comment thirteen can be removed. Comment fourteen on sheet C three point oh, we're, we had a question about ditching the water from the detention pond, too, so that comment has not been addressed yet by staff, so we're gonna wait to see if other staff members can, see if that comment has been addressed or not, but we'll leave it at this time. Comment fifteen, we had a question about a darker green shaded area on the plans, that has been addressed, so comment fifteen can be removed. Sixteen, will one of the detention ponds be large enough for the entire development? And this is a comment that will be addressed when it gets to the grading plans and drainage, but staff, immediately looking at it, just has some concerns that adequate drainage will not be provided as it stands based on the way this is designed. Comment seventeen, building four needs a fire line with reduced pressure backflow preventer. And then comment eighteen, that the FDC must be a hundred foot from the hydrant, that can be removed as it has been addressed. So first sentence of comment three, comment eleven, thirteen, fifteen, and eighteen can all be removed as those have been addressed, but the rest will remain. And what the staff still recommends now of this project due to, A, the number of unaddressed comments, concerns from both the utilities department and the fire department about navigating safely throughout the site.
James, could you come up? Could you, could you walk us through the areas of concern by the fire department, so we have a full understanding of this?
We, we still haven't even got an auto turn for the whole complex, so I gave them all the information for the truck. The biggest concern is, once we get around the backside of the hotel and maneuvering around through the parking lot, the angles there, and also if we had to get into the parking lot over by, I think it's called Medical One, making those turns to that parking lot there is gonna be concerning, and also on the backside of, I think it's the main building three there, and getting turned around inside that parking lot area. But like I've, given all the detailed information of the size of the truck multiple times, I still have not received anything for an auto turn. I've actually spoken several times on the phone.
Yeah, and it seems like, if I'm hearing correctly, with the parking spaces and the amount of land here, and maybe there, there could be a solution here if they would work with you here.
Yes, sir, if they just provide me the auto turn, and then we can tweak a little of the curves a little bit, stuff like that, and be able to maneuver through the complex, that's my main concern.
Okay.
So James, you said you talked to, what's been the response when you asked?
I did to you.
Okay.
That's the response I got every time. I've given them multiple details, remeasured the truck for them in different angles they wanted, I, I have no more information to give them other than provide me back the feedback.
This would require a ladder truck to...
Yes, sir, that would definitely take a tire truck, because of the hotel, but I've provided everything I can provide to them.
Okay. All right, thank you. As far as utilities, you want to come up and just talk us through what your concerns are, 'cause I want this to be known.
So Mark Parker does the review on the plans, and my understanding is there are still many, many issues with the plans that have been submitted, where he is trying to work with the engineer to make corrections.
Okay.
So there is a lot on the plans that we're not comfortable with.
Is it similar situation, we're, we're engaging, but we're not getting the response back, or do you know?
I'm not sure if that's the case, I know they had been sent back, returned back, still many, just many issues on the plan, so I'm not a hundred percent sure if we're not getting a response back, or if the plans are just not where we need them to be.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Sounds like a deferment.
Well, can it be a... Could these, I, I know that we're, we've got a denial or recommendation, is there a potential that this could be worked out under deferment, or is it staff's opinion that this is...
I mean, certainly, I mean, we, even if you defer it or not, or deny it, either way, they can certainly come back and we'll keep working with them regardless.
But it sounds like we've had that level of communication where, where they know exactly what we need to get this done.
That's, that's, that's our opinion, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and you know, if you look at the area, it's a good project for the area, it's kind of in that medical corridor, and things seem to fit here, but it's making sure that it, not only it fits, but it's safe and, you know, our, our utilities can, can work and...
Right.
You know, it works from a logistics standpoint, too.
We can only defer it once, correct?
Now, with the site plan, you're not limited like you are with a plat under state law, so you could certainly defer more than once if you needed to.
Any other questions or comments or thoughts about this?
It sounds like communication's the big problem.
Yeah.
And maybe more, but at least communication is a problem, so...
I, I, I mean, I agree that it can be worked out, and it's perfect for the location, but it does concern me that both our utilities department and fire department have had the same feedback, so I would just say I'm inclined to deny it.
Yep.
And let them figure out timing as opposed to us continuing just to bring it back if they're not willing to work on it.
I agree, this is absolutely a denial option here, not a deferral, that puts it back on the client, not on us to bring it back next month. Okay, any other thoughts? All entertain a motion.
Move to deny.
I have a motion to deny, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to deny, further discussion. All those in favor of denying this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this motion's denied. We are now on to the September bond review report.
Yeah, we got four this month, Woodcrest, five, this, this is a hundred percent built out now, the first two are from the same developer, was not, did not hear back from him on either one, still some items to, topping and other things to be finished on both of those. We would recommend a six-month extension for Woodcrest, and I'm okay with a one-year on Walnut Ridge, since that one's, we only had it a year. Addition to Village of Valley Green, section three, that one's about eighty-two percent built out, they, they did, again, we've had that one a couple years now, we would recommend a six-month extension there. Bankside, five, phase two, that one is complete, and can, we can now shift to the maintenance for that, so we would recommend reducing that one to fifteen thousand, extending it a year as the maintenance bond. Those of you who've been on the planning commission a while, there's a, an access, emergency access road that is, was required on one of the previous sections, eventually that's gonna go away, because eventually they're gonna build a road to connect to Kedron Church Road, but we are still keeping that, so we would basically shift that requirement to this phase, and so they can release phase, six and five, phase one, so, so essentially, but for your purposes tonight, you're reducing this one to fifteen thousand and extending it one year as their maintenance bond, and that's it.
Kevin, on the first item, with it being a hundred percent built out, and I'm looking at, you know, the final topping and striping, we're in the season to do that now, right?
Yes.
And this six months takes us to a point in time in which we're kind of starting to get out of the, the season to do that.
Well, you'll be through the season, you'll be getting, you'll be in, what, February, March timeframe, you'll be getting back to worry about starting it up again, but yes.
I guess it's just a little frustrating that we continue to see this, especially when you're a hundred percent built out. Will we have any type of follow-up communication with these folks?
Certainly, we, of course, we send letters that go out tomorrow to them and to their bank, both, you know...
Is the funding there, is it adequate enough if, if we had to call this?
Well, we're about four and a half years out, so it might be a little concerned on that one, I think the, the next one, I think we're okay, because it's only been a year.
Yeah.
So it would be a little bit of a concern, certainly, and, and that's developer has typically, I mean, he's not been an issue, he's always kept the work done, it's just not always as quickly as we'd like, maybe, he's not walked away from any project he's done with us.
Okay. We've heard the bond review report, any other questions? Any other questions or discussion with that? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve of bond review.
I have a motion to approve the bond review report. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the bond review report. Further discussion? All those in favor of recommending the bond review report signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this motion's approved. Other business?
I don't have anything.
Anything from the commission?
Uh, one thing, Chairman. This past week, in Smyrna knows, there was a terrible occurrence there at the Shell Station off the interstate in Smyrna, and I just want to give kudos to our Smyrna Police Department for acting so quickly and responsibly, and accidents do occur like that sometimes, unfortunately. From what I understand, it was sort of interstate-related. This perpetrator was going along the interstate there and hitting some of the other businesses, but Smyrna Police, thank you for what you do, and we appreciate the job they did on this, so just want to say that.
All right, thank you, Mark. Everyone have a safe and fun and wonderful Labor Day weekend. Enjoy the rest, and I guess after Tuesday, it's, it's back to laboring, so. This meeting is adjourned.